He is not coming tonight.
Yeah, he's not gonna be here.
He's not.
We're all ready to go if IT's ready to go. We're good to rock. I call to order the July 15, 2021 Board of Commissioners' Regular Session. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Gary Tompkins.
Present.
Commissioner Kathy Sue Vetti.
Here, oh, okay, so I have to do that right here.
Commissioner Rochelle Hatcher.
Present.
Commissioner Jake Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Steve Frisbee.
Present.
Commissioner Derek King.
He is excused.
Commissioner Tommy Miller.
Present.
We have quorum.
After a moment of silence, Commissioner Tompkins will lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty as our first
Thank you, and it's great to see smiling faces.
We're not smiling.
All but one up here is smiling. Can I have a motion to approve the July 15, 2021 Board of Commissioners' Regular Session Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Hatcher and Vetti, I don't have to write that anymore.
I'm Rochelle Hatcher, don't you?
I've been writing it for the last year and a half. Yep.
You can remember it all.
Any discussion? Old habits are hard to break. Okay, we're gonna, we'll test this, we're gonna vote on our new system. We're doing electronic voting now instead of a roll call vote. So, do we have that all set? Or should we just do a voice vote? Okay, it's not ready for us. It's not.
Yeah, we'll use the electronic voting for roll call votes.
Yeah.
Voice votes, you'll still just.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 17, 2021 Board of Commissioners' Regular Session as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Tompkins and Miller? Or was it Smith? Miller, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. This just feels different. It's weird.
Because it's different.
I wanna say support Hatcher.
Citizens' time, the next item on the agenda is citizens' time. During citizens' time, the Board Chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the Board. A person recognized by the Chair shall approach the podium and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the Board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for citizens' time on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The Chair shall control the length of time. Each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes, and shall not allow negative personal comments. Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? Anyone? Anyone? All right, we'll move along. Elected and appointed county officials' comments. Looks like the sheriff's on the move.
Good evening. It is nice to see everyone.
Yes.
Pull it down a little closer. And is he on?
Good?
Yeah.
All right, perfect. So there are so many great updates. I'm gonna skim over just a few, some very exciting things. We are continuing our partnership with Summit Point and our mental health, our crisis intervention program. And I, it's interesting, we received some data today. We've handled since 2019 over 1,068 crisis calls. Our agency handled just over 300 of those. And we currently have 18 sheriff's deputies who are crisis intervention team trained. And we've got another program in October. That is a fantastic program. It is reducing and creating so many positive outcomes. And we have Deputy Rob Owen. Deputy Rob Owen is an actual, a train, the trainer for CIT. And he is actually heading out to the National CIT Conference in Arizona, all sponsored by Summit Point. Very exciting for Rob to be part of that. We also have, we are, we have been exploring mental health peer support for law enforcement. It's a new concept that we've been working through, and Sergeant Katrina Harrington has been working on that process. And she has, she, interesting enough, she has been working in our program. She was also invited, and she worked with the Department of Justice on two Zoom conferences with the Department of Justice regarding that. And strangely enough, I think we may be doing the right thing, she was invited by the Department of Justice and the, and the National Police Foundation of Washington, all completely sponsored. She's been invited to the International Police Chiefs Conference in New Orleans, all sponsored by them. And she is going to be a panelist representing law enforcement on mental, physical, trauma, and stress. So I dare say, I think she's putting together a pretty good program for our agency and for our county. So that's pretty exciting information that we have there. And she also handles our Victim Services Unit, and we have six volunteers in that Victim Services Unit. They respond to our homicides, fatal accidents, suicides, any type of trauma death with families. They've created some very interesting packets, and they're really making that connection after the law enforcement connection. They make those connections and help the family. So there are so many volunteers that are doing so many great things for our county and our agency, and it's very exciting. And I will end with this. My last sad but exciting news is we have, we have several people retiring, and I certainly will be highlighting those individuals. But two of them, one is Holly Thomas, and I have to say she was the first female sheriff's captain at the sheriff's office. And Holly, Holly actually was in the police academy that I trained years ago. And so Holly is, is one of the most compassionate, kind, and courteous supervisors, and leads the correctional center. And it's just so exciting that her role, and it's gonna be some big shoes to fill. And then lastly, Randy Hazel, who is the jail administrator, he will be retiring also. So we've got a couple top command in our corrections center that are moving on. They've spent a long time at our agency, and they have, they've served us all well. Thank you again. Have a great night.
Hi, I'm Melinda Weaver, the Deputy Treasurer, and I just wanted to update you guys on what's going on in the next couple weeks for us. We have started, on this coming up Monday, we will be starting four picture visits. So what that means is we'll be out in your communities. We are starting in Albion on Monday, and there's some good news with that. Usually around this time, we're at 1,500 or more forfeited properties in the county, and we're down to 1,270. So I believe that people are using their stimulus funds, are getting to pay their taxes. We've seen that, we've seen it at the local, a lot less came over this year than what we're used to in the past as delinquent. So I think that's something that's helping. And MISTDA has also got a program that's gonna be coming out similar to Step Forward. We don't have all the details on that yet, but as soon as we do, we will let individuals know about that. But I wanted you to know we'll be out starting. We do it usually from next week until, we have to have them done by December 1st. Our goal is to have them done by October 1st. And then the other thing we're doing, I talked to Steve Hinckley this morning, is we're gonna be at the Dog Festival at the park in Battle Creek on August 21st. They're having a festival of some sort, and we're gonna sell dog licenses, and we're gonna really beef up the advertising on it and try to get as many people as we can there, and we're gonna sell them for half off. Because at least if we get them in the system, then they're in there, and then next year we can continue on with the regular prices. The thing is with the dog park, it is in Battle Creek City, and the city of Battle Creek does sell their own licenses. Well, they don't sell them, they farmed it out to a company that sells it for them. But where the dog park sits, which most of you know, there's Penfield residents, Bedford, I know people from Marshall that even go over there. So hopefully, we can get them. But if you could let people know that don't have a dog license, that's their opportunity to get it for half off. They will have to show proof of rabies, though. So, that's it.
Good evening, thank you Chair. Just wanted a quick report. We had our first PPO appointments taking place in our Marshall Building yesterday. We had three appointments, and we've got more booking up already, unfortunately for the circumstance we're in. But it's nice to see that that service is going to be utilized greatly, I think, in our Marshall Office to kind of reach the east side of the county, so I'm very excited about that. And then also, just a reminder, we do have a small election taking place August 3rd. If you're an Emmett Township resident, you will have a public safety renewal millage taking place that day. Hastings School has a bonding proposal on, and we just have a few residents in the portions of Bedford Township that will be participating in that election. Union City Schools will also have two renewals that are operating in their sinking fund, and that will take up portions of Athens, Burlington, Fredonia, Newton, and DeConcha Townships. So we have a little bit bigger group down there. And Burlington Township will be conducting that for all of our, we've consolidated to Burlington Township, and Darlene is doing a wonderful job of coordinating all that with the other local clerks. We as well have a retirement coming up in August. Kurt Thornton, many of you probably know him, and he will be retiring August 5th. We're very sad to see him go. He's in our records department over in the Toller Building, but he is taking advantage of the early retirement, and so we will miss him greatly with his wit, humor, and the wonderful drawings we get from time to time in the office. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
We have no special order of business, we have consent agenda, six items.
So moved. Vetti?
Support.
Vetti and Hatcher, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll. Oh, actually, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? See, old habits die hard. Special Committee Workshop and Board Report. Commissioner Tompkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a few just this evening. First and foremost, the Senior Millage Allocation Committee met July 9th. We heard from Kate Turner of Senior Services on the grand unveiling of the celebrating the centenarians of Calhoun County through storytelling that will be taking place on July 23rd at the United Methodist Church in Marshall from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. I was certainly honored to help with the project for interviewing, as I interviewed Ms. Stella Ingram of Homer. Twenty-four of our 39 centenarians in Calhoun County participated in the storytelling project, because most of you know, we normally would have our centenarians luncheon at Schuler's, but because of COVID, this was kind of a new recreation of how to do it. Unfortunately, as a matter of fact, I attended a visitation of one of those seniors that participated, because unfortunately, our farmer's mom, Doris, passed away at 103. So we've lost two already since then, and I think it really bodes how important this program is gonna be moving forward, because the plan is to move this into school districts so that our young folks can actually see and be able to see the stories and the history of our centenarians, which I think are extraordinary. So again, just was great to hear that. We also reviewed our agenda for upcoming strategic planning session. We recommended for approval a contract amendment to Senior Services for ramps for accessibility program due to the waitlist of 14 and the amount of $50,000. And we also approved a mini grant request for senior matinees that will be taking place at the Bone Theater in Albion for the amount of $5,000. And then also too, if I'm stepping on anybody, I apologize, but our Calhoun County Broadband Task Force met on July 14th. We had a strategy, our first strategy meeting, where, in which we agreed upon our mission, vision, and began to review our goals and objectives. Those four areas discussed include access, affordability, digital literacy, and adoption. And then also, interesting enough, on July 12th, there was a webinar that was provided by Merit Network about the upcoming official unveiling of the survey, the survey that will be used to identify gaps in the internet. As stated, the survey goes live officially Monday, July 19th, and will be available in two ways, most an online survey that probably takes three minutes to complete, and there will also be a paper survey where residents will be able to request that by calling a number here at the, at the county office. Therefore, it'll be sent in a pre postage stamped envelope in return, so there's no cost to our residents at all to do that. Also, just wanted, the survey takes, again, just a few minutes, and I would encourage everyone to fill it out, even if you don't want the service, if you don't feel there's a need, because I think it's the best way we, as the county task force, will be able to assess where those gaps exist in Calhoun County. So I'm really excited about being part of the task force and look forward to, especially someone who had to actually leave the meeting on the 14th, because my little Wi-Fi service through my cellular company was dropping every second, I'd use my phone. So as someone who lives with difficult internet access, where I live in the rural areas, it's very welcome to do. So I'm looking forward to being part of the project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Follow-up questions for you on the 23rd, what time at the Marshall?
Two to four.
Two to four p.m.?
Two to four p.m.
I think I got an invite the other day.
Yep, you did.
You said 29 centenarians, and then how can we get the word out, and where do people, or can they find it or request the paper survey?
Yes, that'll be unveiled come Monday. We'll be unveiling all of that on Monday. There'll be flyers that'll be posted, et cetera, et cetera. But there's also a number, I think it's 269781, and I apologize if I don't know.
That's okay.
But there will be a number available to those, to those individuals come Monday, officially.
So we need to promote that amongst our districts, so that people who are in the rural committee or county, communities that don't have the opportunity, we need to figure out how to get that in their hands.
Absolutely. Although, if I'm not mistaken, also, if I keep looking at Lucy here, but also, there may be an additional text message type option that may be available from a text message type survey. So there's another option that may be available. But again, having the ability to have a paper survey is a positive thing, so, because a lot of folks, again, don't have that internet access. So, yeah. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
On June 30th, the For Each MSU Extension Met, which is a quarterly meeting, it's been pretty good, because all the meetings are quarterly and they're in Vicksburg, so it's a lot easier having Zoom. But they want to announce that all For Each events are a full go now. Everything's opened up, and they had a couple presentations. I didn't bring my notes for the name of the guy, but they did all what these farmers were dealing with, with the dry spring, and now with the really wet summer. What's that?
Both channels. Both channels.
And then, the weekend of the 4th, we had our CCIS, we had our car show, the Cruz the Fountain, we had over 300 entries for cars. Kind of nervous how everything's gonna go, because we're not doing really good financially with COVID and everything, and we actually had a profit, so it was record numbers, and hopefully our affair is the same way.
Anybody else? All right, just one update on 911. We do have two finalists that we're going to interview for the replacement of the 911 Director, and we'll hopefully have that person in place and ready to take over in early September. So, we'll keep moving forward on that. Anybody else? All right, we have no unfinished business, so I'm gonna turn it over to the Administrator Controller, Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will note that I included in my written Board Update Report that you'll get tonight information about the centenarian open house and also the internet survey. So there's a link to the flyer for that survey that gives the phone number to request a paper survey, and also the number to text, and we're asking all of our community partner organizations to post the flyer, and posters, and all of that information. So you'll be able to share that link to anybody that you know through, through my report. And then I'll just mention a couple of other items. We're getting ready to kick off the county's 2022 budget season already. Just got through the audit, and we'll have our 2020 Audit Presentation for you, hopefully sometime in August. Audit was completed on time successfully. We have a clean opinion and no findings, and so all went well. It was virtual, and anyway, proud of our finance staff and everyone else who contributed to that. Now we're moving into budget season. We've got our Budget Committee meetings starting at the end of July. That will include reviewing the fiscal year-end 2020 results, and then bringing you a preliminary mid-year budget adjustment that needs to come before the Board, as we always have in August. And then, of course, also this year, we're adding the big task of putting together plans to invest the American Rescue Plan Act funds. That plan doesn't have to be complete right now, of course, for the next three years to allocate the whole 26 million. But we do want to make sure that those items that are time sensitive or urgent needs for this year, so for example, organizations that lost money due to COVID and really are in need of that, potentially like the fairgrounds, we may, we want to bring some initial appropriation requests to the Board yet this summer, so that we can get the urgent funds deployed, and then we can continue to work out the longer term funds. So that will happen starting later this month. And then, I just want to mention with some of the organizations and boards and committees getting back to in-person, the Michigan Association of Counties is also having their annual conference this year in-person at the end of September, I think it's 27th through 29th. It is all the way on Mackinac Island at the Grand Hotel I'm planning to attend, if any of you are interested. We would like to get you in on the reduced rates that I think have to be registered by sometime in August. So please let us know if you're interested, and we'll, we'll get you registered for that. Our county administrators' group is also meeting in-person in September also. So, exciting times to actually interact with people. And that's it for my report. Any questions, or we can move on to new business. All right, not seeing any. We have six items under new business tonight. The first one is 12B1. This is a renewal of a lease that we've had in place with Alternative Choices LLC for some office space within the Albion Human Services Building. The new lease is a three-year agreement that will generate a little over $15,000 per year to help offset the cost of our facilities. It is a small inflationary-based increase, and this company works closely as a contractor of Summit Points to provide assistance to those with mental health needs and challenges to help them navigate life. And the Albion Center is actually the volunteer hub for the organization. So we're happy to have that little bit of space, just what they need in Albion.
Can I have a motion to approve the lease agreement with Alternative Choices LLC as presented?
So moved. Vetti?
Support.
Miller? Vetti and Miller, is there any discussion? Okay. Is this a voice vote?
This will be, we'll do a roll call vote on all of the new business items.
All right. So, plus for yes, minus for no? In front of you?
Yeah, so right now, our Communications Manager Lucy Blair is managing the open and close the vote, so she's entering those and watching, and we'll be able to lock them down once you've all voted, and then they'll be displayed on the screen.
There you go. Nice. All right, motion carries.
Okay. The next, and I want to thank Brad Wilcox, as always, for managing the lease and really trying to make the best use of our facilities. The next item, actually, the next two items relate to the office of the sheriff. 12B2 is an agreement with the city of Livonia for prisoner transport and lodging. This is also, you could call it a renewal. The sheriff's been doing business with the city of Livonia since 2014. They did do a competitive bid process, and the sheriff was successful in bidding on that with an increase that is sufficient to cover his actual costs. These contracts, as usual, have a built-in sort of administrative cost recovery, and this is a request that you authorize the sheriff and I, whoever's necessary, along with our Corporation Council, to execute the actual contract. What you have attached is a copy of the bid, but a four-year contract, and I think we have currently a few inmates in the jail from Livonia. So, I'd like to continue that relationship. It helps offsets the county's costs, and certainly appreciate the sheriff continuing to go after these contracts and help out other counties and ours.
This is a daily rate, correct?
It's a daily rate, starts at $53 per diem and accelerates up to 57 on the fourth year.
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement with the city of Livonia for prisoner transport and lodging as presented? Support. Miller and Smith, any discussion? Commissioner Miller. Oh. All right, we're gonna vote. The principal's watching, I can tell if you've voted. I think everybody's voted.
It's not, like, real bright, is it?
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Item 12B3 is a renewal of the agreement, again, with the sheriff that has, he's had in place with the village of Homer. This one relates to law enforcement services, and providing law enforcement services to the village since 2014. This agreement was amended with, with help from our Corporation Council back in 2017, and is being requested to, updated to a 2021 agreement with really some minor changes related to ownership and maintenance of the equipment, really without a financial impact to either the village or the county. It looks like we provide four employees with, with about 82 hours a week for the village, and again, this really just offsets the cost of the sheriff providing the service with a little bit of administrative overhead, and hopefully saves a little bit of money and keeps the residents in Homer safe.
Can I have a motion to approve the 2021 Homer Village Law Enforcement Contract as presented?
So moved. Tompkins. Support. Smith.
Tompkins and Smith, any discussion? Motion carries.
All right. Item 12B4 comes from the Road Department. This is a construction bid award for a contract, an agreement with Leroy Township that was actually on the consent agenda, because according to our purchasing policy, those local road agreements are signed by our Managing Director once the townships approve them, and then the Board ratifies those. Because this one is being conducted by a contractor, the Road Department did a competitive bid and is choosing the low bidder, Lakeland Asphalt. I do want to acknowledge our Engineering Director, Christine Parsons, and Civil Engineer, Brian Kernstock, are here tonight to answer any questions, explain a bit about it. I just want to mention, it is a 50/50 cost share with Leroy Township, probably the largest road improvement project with Leroy since I've been here. So just really exciting to get a little bit of work done. It's about a half a million dollar, actually closer to $600,000 project. This bid itself is about $400,000.
Can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County Road Department Construction Bid Award, two and a half mile road improvement, Leroy Township, as presented? So moved.
Support. Hatcher. Support.
Who moved? Miller? Miller and Hatcher? Any discussion? Everybody's voted? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 12B5 is being presented by the Health Department. They were not able to be here tonight, but I'll present on their behalf. This is a proposed new reduced fee for a condensed program to get our food, food safety certified managers in the restaurant industry throughout Calhoun County recertified to make sure that they are in compliance with state laws. So, last year, you know, with the COVID shutdown, the Health Department did not do their regular inspections, and so I think we're seeing a backlog this year of restaurant managers needing to get their recertification. And the normal process is all-day, eight-hour class and tests in a $148 fee. So the Health Department is recommending a condensed version this year that's only three and a half hours, and that includes the test itself to get recertified. So it should help reduce that backlog and require less time of them away from the restaurant and at a fee of $75. So more convenient, less, less cost, and just trying to make sure that we're in compliance with, with state regulations. less cost and just trying to make sure that we're in compliance with with state regulations.
Can I have a motion to approve the health department new reduced fee for food safety review and test as presented?
So moved. Betty.
Support. Smith.
Betty and Smith, is there any discussion?
I'm not sure how to ask. Yeah. How do I raise my hand?
You're all green. It's okay.
I did want to just ask a question, Kelly. Because that's going to be reduced time and reduced classing and hours and things like that, is that going to reduce the the safety of, you know, the restaurants and the food and things like that? And how's that going to affect the safety?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So they will now have two options. So the thought is if somebody thinks they really need the full class in order to pass the test and get certified, they can still choose the all day method. We'll still be offering that. And apparently in Calhoun County, our health department is one of the only providers of this class and of the test. So it's really those that are confident enough that they just need a review of the principals. And they all have to pass the test and, you know, follow this, the state's credentialing to get recertified. So the thought is the safety level will not be reduced because of this condensed version. Good question.
Any other questions? I do have one comment, more than a question. Maybe we should consider this as a permanent solution moving forward?
It is. Well, I should say the, the concept is that yes, this would continue. Technically, the board of commissioners approves fee schedules on an annual basis with the budget. So I do anticipate they'll build this into ongoing budgets.
Awesome. Great. Any other questions? Let's vote. Motion carries. Thank you.
Last item under new business for tonight are our monthly financial statements. This is through June of 2021. So halfway through the fiscal year, the, as the, one moment. As the memo provided by finance outlines, really, I think the thing that stands out the most for the general fund is last month, we reported the receipt of $13 million in our first half of the ARPA funds. The guidance that came out from treasury, which should be expected, as with most grants, required us to defer that. We're not, we're not recognizing that revenue until it's spent in the eligible category. So it was moved onto the balance sheet. So now the income statement for through June looks very similar to last year. And it does not look like we have a windfall. So other than that, you know, we're still expecting to need to amend the budget when it comes to our charges for services, mainly in the area of public safety revenues. Our tax revenues are looking good, even though we haven't really started the summer collection, mainly because of items that come earlier in the year. And this year, for the first time, we had a marijuana tax distribution of 300 and some thousand. And then when you look at the other financing sources, you'll see a million and a half discrepancy, which we hope is just timing relating relating to working with the treasurer on a transfer that was budgeted from the delinquent tax revolving fund. And then on the expenditure side, it looks like our expenditures are up, but that really almost entirely relates to a timing difference. We were quicker this year to do our operating transfers out to the debt service fund than happened last year. So it looks like our, our spending is higher. But if you took away that timing difference, you'll actually still continue to see savings in the personnel area because of some of the partial furloughs and in all of the vacancies that we're experiencing. So I'm going to stop there unless you have questions. I'm about to not be able to talk much.
Yeah. Can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County June 2021 financial statements as presented?
So moved. Tompkins.
Support. Betty.
Tompkins and Betty, any discussion? Commissioner Miller?
I remember a while back, our prosecutor and Dave Dillett was speaking at Marengo Township with this marijuana growth and everything. And he was saying how it's not federally legal and no banks would take that, you know, you couldn't deposit any money. So how does that work with us taxing, getting our taxes from?
Yeah, the tax, the tax distribution that we got is for the Medical Marijuana Act. And it comes from taxes that the providers have to pay to the state and out of the state tax collections, the statute requires them to distribute that back to the local communities. So I don't know the answer. I think the answer to the banking question is they've been able to find banks, you know, willing to do business that maybe we're not federally insured that that can, you know, do business with the industry. But the state is definitely collecting the taxes as required by law. And what we're not sure of is future distributions. And we have not gotten any taxes from the recreational marijuana business yet. And I think that that's the one the local communities were really sort of sold on as coming back to help our public safety, our sheriff's offices. And that, that distribution has not been made. And we keep checking with Michigan Department of Treasury and they really can't give us a projection yet on when and how much. So we, we took our initial annual check this year of 300,000 or so. And that helps out. Obviously, some of the reductions in our revenues, including in the sheriff's office. So it's helpful, but it's not very predictable yet.
More to follow. Any other questions? All right, let's vote. Actually, that's a roll call vote, right? All those in favor? No? Or do we need to open the?
We could do a voice vote. These, this is just accepting the financial statements for information only.
That's what I thought. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item is citizens time. The same rules apply as during the first citizens time. Please limit your time to three minutes and no negative personal comments. Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? Anyone? All right. Any commissioners? Commissioner time?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to announce a couple of milestone birthdays, if you will, that have taken place in my district. First of all, I want to wish a very 150th happy birthday to the Homer Fire Department. They celebrated their 150th year in operation. And we couldn't be more proud of all the service that they do for not only the Homer area, but also for the surrounding townships that they are engaged with. So certainly, again, happy birthday to them. Also, a very happy 100th birthday to Folk Oil Company in Homer. This year, they are selling, anybody that knows the PS Food Mart is the trademark, Mr. Folk. And so his company is celebrating its 100th birthday this year from Homer as well. And then I would be without, without further, I would also want to wish our corporation council, Mr. Jim Dyer, very happy birthday to be happened on Saturday. So happy birthday, sir, as well. Rochelle Tuesday. Well, happy birthday to Commissioner Hatcher as well. I apologize.
29.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anybody else? Commissioner Miller?
I'd like to, for everybody up here to really consider, for these townships that are holding accountable for helping funding their local road projects, to consider allowing them to hire contractors if they choose. I think the townships right now feel that they're bent over a barrel. They get prices and they have no other options. I honestly believe some of these bids that some of these townships has got recently, they could hire a contractor for a much cheaper price. And if they're going to be putting their money forward, I would really like to see these townships to be able to hire a different contractor if they choose so. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to respond to that just, just briefly. I think we've got to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, that we're looking at all of the deburming, any preparation work, tree work, all, tree work is of course outside. And are we getting the same mix that we're supposed to be? Culvert replacements, all those things. So we, I think we got to compare apples to apples. And I get what you're saying in some respects. But in the other respect, we're, while we're only paying 50%, we're still the owner. So we have a lot of more responsibility, I think. It's all taxpayer dollars and it needs to all be spent as wisely as possible. So I'm not saying I disagree with you. I just think we got to make sure that when we're going to do those things that we, we do them correctly and we make sure that we get the same outcome that we were trying to achieve otherwise.
I believe, yeah, there's a lot of added costs in there that are necessary.
Okay. I appreciate that. Anybody else? All right. Claims payable. Can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County claims payable for June 10th, 2021 through July 8th, 2021, in the amount of $9,575,350 and 92 cents as presented?
So moved.
Hatcher?
Support.
And Miller? Any discussion? And everybody's voted. Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any announcements? This is? Commissioner Hatcher?
I do. I'm sorry. Let me, let me get to it. I'm sorry. Actually, the one that I was going to hit two of them, but I did want to announce that New Level Sports, which some of us may, we recognize New Level Sports, that's in Washington Heights area, they are having their second annual youth run. It's 5K. Yeah, true. Good. I'll be passing out water. But every little bit, every, every help, every, exactly. But I, that is going on. That's going to be tomorrow. And I mean, I'm sorry, not tomorrow, Saturday. They're going to be doing that on Saturday. And then we also, Washington Heights, they also had an entrepreneurship fund program that they're in the middle of. And that is going great. And they've been able to assist in what we call the Advent, the Village District, which is the Advent District, in about maybe $250,000 in entrepreneurship. And that's just for those residents there. And I think that is really great. So they are really moving. And I told them that I would make that announcement for them because they are really helping the community there. So that's it.
Anybody else?
You would have signed up for it.
This, this is unprecedented.
All right. Well, then I'll make one announcement. Since I'll make sure that you're.
I feel uncomfortable.
All right. Well, right off the top of my head, July 25th, Sunday, July 25th, the Albion American Legion will be hosting their annual or their, their monthly pancake breakfast, although I don't participate in that. I just give the money anymore due to my diet now. But it's a great, for $10, you get some great pancakes and some great conversations. So come out and support your veteran organizations. Early Albion American Legion would certainly appreciate it. So again, July 25th from eight until, oh, until one. As a matter of fact, I will actually be serving up, I've agreed to do some volunteering in terms in the kitchen. So watch out. So they got me hooked up to do that. So.
Special cakes on the way. All right. Anybody else? I'd just like to offer Commissioner King and Tara, his wife, happy anniversary today. So good for them. And hope they enjoyed their day. Any other comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.